You ready, Georgiana? Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming to the special meeting of Tuesday, June 26th, and the time is almost Please, everybody in the public, we, a couple of us just turned our phones off. We appreciate it if you would silence your phones. And then, let us stand for an invocation and a pledge. Father in heaven, thank you very much for this evening. We're glad that we have some people from the public here. We pray that we will make wise decisions. We're glad that we have a couple of people that have applied to fill this position here, and may we choose wisely. Please bless us in the meeting. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Georgiana.
Director Martinelli?
Here.
Director Ann Rice?
Here.
President Dan Whitman?
Here.
Director Joe Calow?
Here.
Division five directorcy has broken out this time.
You've probably all picked up an agenda over there, and maybe you've read item number two. It's public participation. If there's anybody here that wants to address anything that's not on the agenda, this is the time that you get up and give us your name and address, and speak to it. Seeing none, we'll move on. Three, appointment of director, Division five. Kevin, Georgiana, which one of you would like to?
I can take it. You obviously have a vacant seat for Division five. You remember opening it up to candidates for a specific period of time, which closed on June 15th. We had two candidates submit letters of interest. You have had those letters of interest for a specific, for a period of time to review. And, so, at this point, I will give it back to the board president on how he would like for those candidates to be interviewed, or however you would like to interview those. Just remember, you do have the option of appointing. The appointments will be of a majority vote of the board, which means three to one. If there, it cannot come to a consensus, then the board of supervisors has an opportunity to appoint that, at that point. And just for the candidates, you are just running for the remainder of the term until election time of November of this year. So, just filling that small portion. And then, once you're elected, if you're reelected, it's only for another two-year period. So, it's a funky type of window that you guys are going to be filling, so.
So, why don't we just take them, unless you have other comments, take them in order of the application. Mr. Brown, would you like to, oops, I'm sorry?
The three other times I've been involved is that the candidates wait in the other room. You take one at a time, and ask them the questions, and that way, it's a little fairer. And then, they go back, and you take, and you can ask the same like we did for the interview of the general manager, or manager, I'm sorry, the same questions.
You can ask them if you got required, you know, like in the conference room?
Yeah, that's through the conference room.
Would you like to ask them if they want to do that? You want to just do it here, or you like to go back behind, or?
No, they-
I mean, as candidates-
That's what I mean.
You can wait in the conference room.
Yeah, the candidates. Do you feel that there's a reason to? I've never seen that done before, but it doesn't matter to me.
Go for it.
Well, then, I would just assume you just got up, if you're not-
Yeah, handle it in public.
Just, yeah. Let's have everybody hear it.
Hi, I'm Lee Brown. Obviously, you know that. Everybody's read the letter. Pretty much tells you what, where I have, where we've been. We were just, I was just talking to Dan, and it's been 22, 23 years since we closed our hardware store, so. It's been, Paradise has changed a lot in 30, 32 years that we've been here. We thought it would, according to what we did when we came to town, from a marketing approach, we thought that the town was going to change quite a bit in about 10 years. Well, it's been 30 years, and here we are, pretty much the same. But, a lot of things have, a lot of things have changed. Do you have any questions?
I was just wondering what motivated you to send the letter of interest?
Well, I've always been interested in water quality. We have a daughter that lives in Anaheim. I don't know if you've ever been to Anaheim, but their, I don't think their water's good enough to put on my plants. I mean, we bring our water down there. It's awful. And it's drinking water. It's what they, you know, anyway.
Consumes.
And our water is like, it's equal to none.
It's great.
So, and I'm really big on conservation. I have about two, maybe, it's probably closer to 3,000 feet of drip line in my house, on our property. So, we conserve until about August, end of July, August and September, when it gets really hot, and then, I up it a little bit. So, other than that, that's really, and I've seen, I've seen a lot of really positive change in PID since we've been here. And I'd just like to see that it continues.
Thank you.
And thank you for your letter of interest. Have you ever served on a board, a public board like this, before?
I served in, on the planning commission for six years. I didn't, I had personal reasons for not running again, so, I didn't.
And this, even though it says it's a mandatory one meeting a month, it turns out to be more like three meetings a month, and so, you wouldn't have any conflict, or problem with more than one meeting a month?
Oh, Dan could tell you what you do on a planning commission.
Okay.
It's, it's, it's not one, it's not one day a month.
Okay.
If you have five things on your agenda that you have to go and review, then you have to go around Paradise and review projects, and, and, so, and that can take all kinds of time. So, yeah. And I did that for eight years.
And while we always try to be collegial on this board, we're five different people, and we have five different opinions oftentimes, but once the board, the majority of the board makes a decision, we move forward with that decision. If you, if you were one of the minority on a certain project, how would you go forward?
How would I go forward? If, if the majority rules, you move forward.
Thank you.
That's pretty easy for me.
Dan?
Question?
Yeah, I have a few. How do you think the recall movement did for the district?
I'm sorry, Bill.
The recall movement, do you think it was positive for the district?
It's, it's sad that, that anything has to get to that position. Any, any community has, has to go to the recall. But, if it's necessary, it's necessary, and you move on.
Return on investment.
I'm sorry?
Return on investment. ROI.
What, what do you?
Well, we have projects that we're doing here. Tonight, we'll be voting on a couple of them, and we, I'm always asking for return on investment, and we're not getting it much, most of the time. So, I'm just asking you what you know about return on investment.
Well, that's a pretty general question, Bill. Return on investment, what investment, and what's the, what are the parameters for return on investment?
Well, what's the payback? Is it going to pay back money, or is it all going to be going out, and you're only gaining on better service, or something like that? It's an intangible, so you can't put down on a balance sheet. So, if we fix pipe, you can sort of figure out what your return on investment is, so.
I, I'd have to have more information to, to make a decision on, if I have an investment, I'd want to know a lot of, I'd have a lot of questions.
Okay, well, most of the time, we do, but about all sorts of things. District has goals for the future. Is there anything you can think of you'd like the district to do in the future?
Not right now. I'd, I'd need more information before I could make, I would make a decision.
Okay. Then, we're coming into our budget cycle. We're going to be starting that pretty soon. Would you feel comfortable working on a budget?
Oh, sure. I did that for probably 40 years.
Forty years?
Well, we had budget in the banking business.
Yeah.
Had a budget every year, you know, we, yeah, worked it. And I was a department head, so, yeah. We worked on budgets all the time.
Thanks, Lee. That's all I have.
I told, I think, everybody on the board here that I did go visit with you, and it's been a while since I've had such a nice, long visit with you. I've known you forever here, and you've been a good friend and everything, and I also visited with Bob Prevost, and it was nice to get to know him, too. Because these are always a little bit uncomfortable, and we don't get to know you very well from five minutes of standing up here. And so, it was a delight to go visit with you, and thank you. Because I think that, I believe that you said that you took my place on the planning commission, because I went off the planning commission, and went on to the council, and you were saying that you think that you filled that seat, and I think that you might be right. I thought that we had served together on the planning commission for a short period of time, but I'm getting old and senile, and so.
You were, you were on the council, and I was on the-
Is that what, yeah.
Yeah.
So, that's, yeah.
I, I-
I thought that that was right.
I had trouble yesterday, a little, what was that, 20? It was 14, 15 years ago, 16 years ago.
Yeah. Time just marches on, doesn't it? And you did say, you did share, that you, of course, had worked at the bank for a long time, and, of course, had done, as a loan officer, had worked with budgets, and done bookkeeping for, and had to handle a lot of money, and that's very important to, been in a position where you know finances to a degree. And whether you end up with our choice or not, I don't know if the rest of the board knows, but you are already on the finance committee as the civilian, you know-
Member of the public.
Yeah, the public representative on, and so, we're glad to have you there. And one of these days, we might actually have a meeting, since you've, since you've gotten into that position, so. So, thank you for your application, and we appreciate it very much, Lee.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lee.
Mr. Prevost.
Well, thank you all for having me. My wife couldn't be here tonight because she's babysitting a two-year-old grand, granddaughter, and I didn't want you all to have to run out of here and pour her, a little monster running around. So, she, she's home. I didn't even notice it was live, or I could have told her to watch it. So, anyhow, I sent you a little one-page resume, and I just want to add two things to it that I didn't, I didn't really think about until I read the agenda for tonight. Years ago, I was, I think by process elimination, I was designated as the president of our association. And in that capacity, I negotiated pay and salary contracts for seven years. And although it was very informative and educational, sometimes, it was not fun. But I learned a lot, and I think in doing those types of things, you have to cooperate with a lot of people. Had to cooperate with the county, had to cooperate with 200 members of my association. And when you have a situation where some are getting near retirement, and some are trying to make a house payment, you get in a situation where some want more salary, and some want more benefits, and you have to work really hard to bargain together, and come to an agreement. So, I thought that was a valuable lesson. And the other thing I did, I don't think I put it in my resume there, but I worked in personnel services for about a year. Thankfully, I only worked for a year. And in that capacity, we have to do hiring, background investigations, interviewing, do a lot of personnel things. And also, I had the distinct pleasure of being a supervisor for internal affairs. So, sometimes, I didn't make a lot of friends, but you have a duty to do, and you do it. It's not popular sometimes, but you just have to do what, what the job requires. And I noticed, you know, I think Billy brought up a fact about, you know, sometimes, you're in the minority. You're correct, sometimes, you're in the minority. Mark brought it, you're in the minority sometimes, and that's just the way it is. But, as, as a decision's made, especially if it's made higher up, you go with it. If it's a consensus of the board, this is what we're going to do, and this is the vote, this is what we go with. And I've been proven wrong in my career. I'm sure nobody else has, right?
Oh, never.
As have we all.
Never.
So, you know, I voted for something, or I had a decision, and I was in a decision-making area there, where I said, you know, let's go back and try it again. Let's, let's try it another way. And I'm not too proud to say that, because I think, you know, I think that's one of the things you need to think about, is, is, you know, reevaluating what you do, and taking a different position. So, with that, I, take any questions, or anything else you want to know?
You want to start?
Yeah, I was just wondering, have you done any background, looking at what we've been doing here in the last few months, or maybe even the last year?
No, you know, I, I, I was telling Dan, I was approached by Barry of the Garden Center a while back, and he said, you know, I get interested in the board, and I looked at it a little bit. Well, I lived in the wrong district. I think they had an opening in two, and I'm in five, and so, I kind of put it on the shelf. I didn't really think about it much, again, until this opening came up, and I said, wait a minute, I live in five, so.
Yeah.
No, technically, I haven't done a lot of research. I came to one or two of the meetings when, when they were being held at the theater.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah.
And just to see what was going on. And, again, there was a lot of diversity in the crowd about what should happen, and I'll admit, I didn't know enough about the issues to really take a side one way or the other, but I got a feeling of what was going on, so.
Okay.
I used to live in Santa Rosa, where our water bill was based on our sewer, no, our sewer bill was based on our water usage.
That's right, yeah.
Now, some people call that a tax.
[laughing]
So, if you water your lawn all month, and you take a shower once a week, your water bill goes up. I never understood that.
Right.
So, anyhow, that's, you know, I don't have a lot of technical knowledge on this. I've done a lot of technical purchasing, where I used to work for real high-tech equipment and capital, capital improvements and capital purchases, but I'm sure not at this level. So, that answers your question.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
And I just have the same questions. I see that you do, you have served on various boards and commissions. Could you kind of read, or highlight that, or?
I was on, I was on the agent commission for San Mateo County, and then later, in Sonoma County, when I moved to Sonoma County after I retired. And that, that was very rewarding, in that we, our job was to allocate state and federal funding for seniors. So, if you have a brown bag program, or a Meals on Wheels, you would allocate funds. And so, it's a matter of setting priorities, and, you know, trying to service a community. And then, on the other hand, I used to report to boards. When I ran, I used to run an intelligence center, I had a narcotics unit, I had an auto theft unit, and a lot of these were grant funds, and they were funds from, we had 20 cities in our county, so those funds would come from all the cities. Well, they want to know how we're spending the money. So, my job was to have monthly board meetings at that level, and then later, I became in charge of a federal intelligence center for the whole Bay Area. And that was a lot, rather large budget, with a 15-member board. Fortunately, everybody got along, so it was, it was a pleasure to work with them. They were all heads of agencies. In fact, Bob Mueller was my boss. He was the U.S. attorney at that time, San Francisco. And these are all really good people to work with. And they had the same interests as any other board, how you spend on the money, and what are we getting for it. So, good, good lessons. And I learned how to be brief.
And you've already touched on-
Oh, I like that.
Yeah.
You've already touched on how you would proceed if you were in the minority on a, on a board vote, but I will ask about the commitment, the same question that I asked Mr. Brown, that this is usually more than one meeting, and it's a lot of reading and research, and if you, although it sounds like you come from a strong government background, it is a lot of, a learning curve as to how water is governed.
It's, it'll be, it'll be a real good learning curve for me. And I've, you know, I've had different assignments in my, in my career, where I'd walk in and say, I didn't know anything about, okay, I didn't know anything about narcotics, I didn't know anything about auto theft, but I learned fast. And I think, you know, I've seen the CEO of EBAG become the CEO of HP, and the CEO of HP become the CEO of Oracle. They, I can guarantee you, because I was there, they had no technical knowledge of any of this stuff, but they know how to administer, they know how to do budgets, they know how to bring people together, and that was their strong points. And, and I think that's the main thing. But the other stuff, I think you can learn.
Thank you.
Do you know anything about the recall movement that occurred up here?
Only what, I think I read it in the paper once or twice, but I couldn't even tell you what I read. I, I didn't have that much knowledge, or, I wasn't close to it enough to really pay attention to it.
ROI, return on investment?
Yeah, I heard you ask that question.
Yeah, I know. You're getting all, I'm going to give you one extra one, but you're getting the same one that we-
Well, I mean, to me, a return on investment, there's usually short-term, long-term. If, if I spent a million bucks, and I'm going to get back 100,000 a year in 10 years, I'm going to start getting a return on my investment. I'll start making, I'll start putting money in the bank, just like, just like saving money. If, you know, if you're looking for short-term return on investments, if you buy a piece of equipment that'll do this for you, and make money, or provide a service, and save you money down the road somewhere else, that's a good return on investment. And that's kind of how I look at it.
Goals for the future.
I'm sorry?
Goals, goals.
Well, that's a tough one. I assume your goal here is to provide service to your community, to your customers, the most cost-effective way you can, and give them the best quality water you can. I mean, that's, sounds like a pretty simple way to do it. I know it's not simple, because there's a lot of infrastructure involved, and a lot of people involved, and, you know, equipment wearing out, a lot of regulations I'm sure you have to contend with, and, and, but I think the goal is to basically give people what they need, at the cheapest price you can.
Budget, budget's coming. I'll actually start it next month, working on a budget for the district, for the year coming. Our year is, what is it, Kevin?
It's July 1st to June 30th.
Yeah.
Fiscal year.
Fiscal year.
Burger County budget type, yeah.
Thanks, Ken. I screwed that up.
Yeah.
Budgets.
I'm sorry, what's the question?
Yeah, budgets. What do you think about budgets?
Well, I don't think you can, I don't think you can run McDonald's without it. You gotta, you can't run your house without it. You have to have a budget. Everything has to have a budget. It's just a matter of degree. But, I've done budgets for 34 years, and every unit I was in, I was the guy who had to do the budgets. Somebody originally found out I knew how to do Excel, so I got elected. And, but since then, it was, it was a good learning experience, and I actually enjoy doing budgets. Sometimes, you have to be creative.
The last question is, public service clubs. Do you belong to any public service clubs in Paris?
I'm sorry, how many?
Public service clubs? Do you belong to any?
I was at Rotary for five years, that type you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah. I was in Rotary for five years, I was in Elks for about five years. Those are probably the two main ones. I could probably think of more if I had time, but those are probably the two main ones I, service clubs I belong to.
Your turn.
Thank you. Well, I got a lot of my questions answered already by visiting with both of you. Thank you very much. I appreciate your allowing me to do that. I was, you might be interested all in knowing that he knows more about Paradise Lake than I do, and I'm kind of embarrassed, because his wife and he kayak on it, and walk around it, and do everything, and they hike all over the place, and I keep telling my wife that one of these days, I gotta do that, because I don't-
Take more time off.
I know, I need to. I just work too much. My wife tells me that, too.
Well, I've only been up here since 2001, and there's so many beautiful hiking trails and places to go up here, it's amazing. But you have to remember, I came from the Bay Area, so, that's the place to be from.
So, I don't have any questions, you, in your, my private visits with you, you guys answered everything for me.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, procedure would be that if you, Georgiana, do you kind of take it from there, or just somebody, somebody make, nominate somebody, and then, and then we just vote and see?
I move to appoint Robert Prevost to fill Division five vacancy.
I'll second that.
Okay. You guys can discuss. Would you like to make a nomination on it also, or?
Yeah, I'd like to nominate Lee Brown, because of his long-term residence here, and knowing people, and things that would be hard to explain, but anyway.
You have any more questions or comments, or, if not, well, then we vote on the first name?
First nomination.
Nominate. Georgiana.
Director Sol?
Yes.
Director Rice?
Yes.
Director Calow?
Yes, on Mr. Brown.
No, this is voting on, this is, this is Mr. Prevost.
And President Whitman?
Yes.
Three to one.
It's three to one.
No need for the second vote.
So, good. Get both of you in finance, that's great. Okay. Thank you very, very much. You're welcome to stay and listen to a few, few more visits. Yes, oh, that's correct.
And he's going to come up here and follow us.
Georgiana has to do that. Do you do it standing here? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lee.
Thank you, Lee.
Thanks for your-
I'm looking forward to hearing from you on the, on the finance committee.
Yep, he will be in touch.
I will be calling the finance committee very shortly. We will be on calls. So, I must think about if you wouldn't mind raising your right hand and reading out both of our statements, please.
Robert Prevost has always sworn that I would support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, and its all enemies, foreign and domestic. I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California. But I take this obligation freely, without any method, reservation, or purpose of evasion, and that I will willingly discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations, thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I'm going to give you an official invite to our dedication on Friday.
Good deal.
You'd like to be called Robert or Brown?
Bob, please.
Bob, Bob it will be.
I think I can remember that name.
Yes.
My husband, Bob's over there.
Pretty simple.
My husband's there. Comes to all the means, almost everything.
Okay.
We'll let this business transpire, and-
Four A.
Thank you. And we are now on four A. Four A, Reservoir B replacement project. Kevin?
Yeah.
Hey, wait a minute.
Page nine.
Oh, OR.
So, we're looking at a contract amendment number two with Water Works Engineers for planning and design. They found out, once we submitted our SEQA documents, that we need to do additional work on doing an alternatives analysis. This is driven really by EPA. It also, you know, includes the no-project alternative also. So, it's just a common SEQA requirement these days, so, we're looking at a change of scope and cost to the contract, increases the cost by 7,100, and adds-
I'm going to give you the official invite to our dedication on Friday.
Good deal.
Would you like to be called Robert or Brown?
Bob, please.
Bob, it, Bob it will be.
I think I can remember that name. My husband Bob's over there.
That's pretty simple.
Comes to all the means, almost everything.
Okay.
We'll let this business transpire.
Four A.
Thank you. And we are now on four A. Four A, Reservoir B Replacement Project. Kevin?
Hey, wait a minute.
Page nine.
Oh, OR.
So we're looking at a contract amendment number two with Water Works Engineers for planning and design. They found out, once we submitted our SEQA documents, that we need to do additional work on doing an alternatives analysis. This is driven really by EPA. It also, you know, includes the no-project alternative also. So it's just a common SEQA requirement these days. So we're looking at a change of scope and cost to the contract. Increases the cost by seventy-one hundred and adds the SEQA, additional SEQA work. Do you have any questions?
I think Sammy prepared us for this last time we met, so unless there's discussion, I'll go right to a motion.
Anybody have any questions on it? Of course, we know that you're completely filled in and know exactly what's happening.
Yeah, yeah, exactly what you're voting for.
I'll catch you on Philly.
Okay, then I move approval to authorize Water Works Engineers Contract Amendment Two for additional SEQA work regarding an alternatives analysis required by the state revolving fund loan environmental unit in the amount of $7,100 for a revised contract total not to exceed $781,064.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. For B, Tank C Rehab Project. I guess Jim again.
This is also a contract amendment for scope and cost. It's amendment number two with Harper Associates Engineering. Now, they're doing the C-Tank Rehabilitation Project. So what was interesting, during the preparation of the bid documents, our District Council determined that our general conditions were really, well, not appropriate for a public agency. What she found is the general conditions recommended by Water Works Engineers that's, that were in our current bid documents for the B-Res project were appropriate. So we're basically substituting those general conditions into, replacing Caltrans' general conditions that the district had been using for many years. But the, where the cost comes in is the supplementary conditions are always unique to every project. So they really look at the general conditions, and they, they're modified to fit the project specifically. So that's, that's where the additional cost comes in, actually. There's, there's some brain work that Harper has to do to do that work, and since they're so familiar with the contract plans and specs, it's very, it's, well, easy for them to do. So we're requesting only $3,000 and a scope change.
And will we, will we be using that format then, going forward?
That's, that's Emily's plan, yes.
Okay, sounds good.
Yes. Now, and she, well, she may tweak the general conditions slightly in the future.
Each project?
But, but they're definitely suitable.
Jay? Will, any, any questions? It seemed pretty straightforward.
Yeah, it was straightforward as well. Do you want to move this one?
By the way, would, Bob, this is Jim Passanese.
Jim, thank you.
Oh, you did, okay. What's your official title? Did he tell you what his official title was?
The Treatment Superintendent.
Okay. Motion?
Oh, sure. Yeah. I move to authorize the interim district manager to execute a contract in amendment number two with Harper and Associates Engineering Incorporated to include new general and modified supplementary conditions in the bid documents in the amount of $3,000 for a revised contract total not to exceed $82,000.
I'll second that.
Movement seconded. Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. For C.
Okay, so we, the board, looked at the existing grant agreement with Boating and Waterways for a new North Lake Boat Launching Facility. But the board didn't find the conditions in the grant agreement in the best interest of the district, is the simplest way to say it. And I could, it would be, if you wanted to go into more detail about that, that the ad hoc committee could do that, I would just like to say it was in the best interest of the district to terminate the agreement. So we contacted Boating and Waterways, and they gave us a prescriptive way to terminate the agreement. A resolution, which is what you need to adopt today. You did adopt a resolution to get the grant, now you need to adopt a resolution to get rid of the grant. Sounds pretty logical. And, but, and then also just a simple notice of intent letter, which is part of your board packet. So there, Boating and Waterways has reviewed both the resolution and the letter of intent, and they, they believe this, both documents are sufficient to accomplish the termination of the grant agreement.
I've been trying to fill him in kind of on the side here, so he kind of has a semi-clue as to what's going on.
Yeah, this is kind of in the rear-view mirror business.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, so if there's, no questions for you?
I don't suspect, because all of us know, we've already approved it, so.
So I move approval to adopt Resolution 201809 that documents the district receiving the Division of Boating and Waterways Grant Agreement, C4123010, and the district's intent to terminate the agreement.
I'll second it.
And now by rule of call.
But it has to be by rule of call. Georgiana?
Director Sol?
Yes.
Director Rice?
Yes.
Director Prevost?
Yes.
Director Kellum?
Yes.
Yes. For D, election appointment. For the election and appointment of Vice President for the remainder of 2018, succeeding Cliff Jacobson, and some of the other positions.
So I, I'm sorry, I have already printed them out, so the former can nominate.
Any.
And so are they, they're not linked, though? Director Prevost will take Director Jacobson's?
It's not automatic.
Not automatic?
You can nominate, you can nominate.
So it could be, but I mean, on the committee, for the committees?
Yeah.
Or does the president?
That's next, that's next.
That's next.
Or instance, what would be?
Appoints committees?
Yeah.
The Vice President has to be elected?
You're correct, but I nominate Ann Rice.
Oh, thank you, I'll accept.
I'll second.
Both nominations? We close nominations?
Unless somebody else wants to nominate somebody else, so. Is there anybody else that wishes to make a nomination for anybody else? If not, we'll take a vote on that. All those in favor of Ann Rice be Vice President the remainder of the year, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Ann. Thank you, Vice President.
I need you to call me Madam Vice President.
Yes, Madam Vice President. Hillary Clinton wanted to be called Madam, oh, no, that's the wrong one.
Whoops.
E, committees and district. So, appointing replacement to serve in the following committees, succeeding Cliff Jacobson. I, too, thought that that was just done by the President, but if, if you.
It's by you.
Yeah, it is by you.
But if you don't mind, I'd like to just fill Bob into those same two positions, because especially of his financial background and so on. Would that work?
And administrative personnel as well.
Correct. So if that's okay with all of you, then I would like to do that at this time. We'll tell you later what we just saddled you with. Okay.
I'm already in the highlighter.
Yes. Yeah, because you, did you get that sheet that has what we were doing on it here?
Those are the two positions.
Right, I saw that, yeah.
Yeah, so you and I are on both of those committees with, with me. And he would be our Aqua JPI representative.
It's on the backside.
And that, yes. And that meets how frequently?
Really, honestly, he doesn't have to attend any. I'm the alternate representative.
Okay.
I'm on the Finance Committee for Aqua JPI, so I'm there anyway.
So you're just there anyway?
But he has, he can definitely attend, and I can all fill him in on all of the meetings and all that.
How often does that occur?
Twice a year.
Okay, that's what I thought.
It's a fun, it's a, it's either, it's a north-south, and they do the north in the spring, the south in the, in the fall, and they have, it's with, it's connected to the Aqua Conference. And they're pretty nice places, so.
Would this be a good time to close out some ad hoc committees? So it's the.
It's not agenda's, can we do that?
Ad hoc committees fall off once the, the.
Do, do we have to take?
The purpose has been.
Yeah, we already, we've solved one since our.
So you don't have to, the North Lake Boat Launch Project just goes away?
It's dissolved.
Just automatically gone? Good question, Bill, thank you.
Yeah.
And so with the, with the dedication of the garden Friday, then that committee drops out, too?
Correct.
Yes. Yeah, it's already gone.
Had its last meeting, no?
What was its last meeting?
Yep.
Okay.
No, the last meeting is Friday at 10 o'clock.
So I'll update the committee assignments in seven hours.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Georgiana. Okay, closed session. Five A, conference of labor negotiators, and five B, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation. So we will go to closed session now. The time is 7:09.
Bob, don't get used to this, this is.